All right, good evening. This is the March 5th, 2025 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Claussen?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda. We did have a sign up sheet out in front, nobody did sign up, but just in case somebody scooted in, is there anybody that wants to speak on open forum this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move then to number five and look for a motion in a second to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Garza, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is presentations, we actually have three this evening. Our first presentation, excuse me, is an Eagle Scout Award, and it's on Belkey. Belkey, sorry. So, council, why don't you join me down in front, and we'll have him join us up front. All right. There we go. So this is one of those great opportunities, once again, we've been doing quite a few of these over the last few years specifically, where we love to recognize and honor our Eagle Scout Award recipients, which is what we're here for this evening, or Girl Scout Gold Awards. And the reason we do that is because typically, and in this case it's the same thing, these individuals, as part of their final project to attain Eagle Scout, they do a project of some type to benefit the community in this particular case, I'll let him share in a little bit of what that project is that he did for Cottage Grove, but Owen obviously made it all the way through, and his mom and dad are sitting over here on the left. I know his dad is telling me he's got to get out to fly a plane this evening, so we'll make it fairly quick here. But one of the things we do in recognizing our Eagle Scouts is, one, is we obviously get you up in front of the room here, and present you with the plaque, and then also, for those that don't know, we do have down our side hallway outside the council chambers here, a wall of honor, if you will, where any past Eagle Scout or Girl Scout Gold Award winner, winners, excuse me, have their name posted out there, and if you go over there and look, you'll see that there's quite a few that go way, way, way back, and we always like to say, I mentioned it earlier, we have a few, my son's on there, Dave, Councilmember Thede, two eels and a gold, so he's got them all through there, so that's pretty awesome. So what I'll do here is I'm going to read this plaque, and then I'm going to let you tell the public, once we do the presentation here, what your Eagle Scout project was. So, what we're going to be doing is Owen Belkey, Belkey, I got it right, congratulations on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout through Troop Five Cottage Grove, Minnesota, presented this fifth day of March 2025 from the city of Cottage Grove, Myron Bailey Mayor. So on behalf of all of us up here, our staff, and all the citizens of Cottage Grove, congratulations. There we go, now we'll make you tell us what your project was.
Hello, everyone, my name's Owen Belkey. I just achieved my Eagle Scout and had my ceremony this past February, and my Eagle Scout project was building a tetherball court for the city of Cottage Grove, I built it in Pine Tree Pond Park, it is still standing, I would really hope. I built it out of cement, so I would really hope it's still there. I built it there, it took us about, it took us three days to build it entirely, but over six months to plan out and fundraise, and I wanted to thank everyone here for being here to support me for this, and I also wanted to thank my parents for supporting me throughout my entire scouting journey, and for anyone, if they are listening or watching, that have lended support to my project through financial funds or through helping me out via volunteering, thank you so much, this project would not have gone the way it did without any of you. Thank you.
Yep, they did. So, mom and dad, you want to come up, we're going to take a picture with the group here?
I was just informed that our Minnesota Lions Club is currently sitting back here. I wanted to extend a very special thank you to you guys. The Lions Club was one of the deciding factors on whether or not I was going to do my project, and your support made all of the difference, I cannot thank you nearly enough.
All right, right over here, one, two, want to scoot in a little bit, council?
Congratulations.
Where are you going?
Indianapolis.
He was asking your dad where he's flying. He was worried he was going to be gone. All right, so thank you again, let's give them one more round of applause. Fantastic. All right, our next presentation this evening is the East Cottage Grove Scramblers' donation to the Police K-9 Program, and our director, Public Safety Director Pete Kerner is going to start us through this particular one, and then I know you're going to do another one here a little bit.
Well, thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Yeah, this is great to get this donation up on the screen here in a moment, I have, I just tried to highlight a couple of things, the East Cottage Grove Scramblers that they participate in, as you can see, that first one, the Washington County Trail, Star Trail, we have 140 miles of snowmobile trails in Washington County, our club here in Cottage Grove, they groom over 50 miles of it. Another big thing is they promote another recreational activity in the area and promotes responsible riding. The club meets with our Public Service Commission once a year to go over the trails. Is he going to be a good boy? All right, I don't know if I want him right behind me. And then obviously, the club, the last five years have done the Dust 'Em Off Vintage Show, it's a snowmobile and swap meet, they have food, vendors, raffles, and a vintage radar run. This year, the Cottage Grove Police Department brought out our speed trailer, and they were able to do that, they actually transported snow in for their event, would have been better tonight, I guess, but, so with that, in a moment, I'm going to have the club come up, they would like to present the check for $1,000. They've decided that they want this money earmarked towards our K-9 program, and obviously, with talking with our K-9 officers, we have kind of two things, we're looking at a treadmill for canines, and they're also, we're looking to partner at some point with an Eagle Scout to build some of the different equipment that we'd use for training out in the field for training like we had years and years ago. So, with that, I would like to invite the members up, and they brought their big check. And then, Mayor, afterwards, we'll have you accept it when you're, yeah.
Sure.
If you feel comfortable with it.
So I guess, does anybody from the Scramblers want to speak? I make, I'm standing next to, Jeremy's like, no, no. So as we're getting all of them in here, I just want to say thank you, obviously, this is amazing. A couple of years ago, I got a chance to come out and check out what was going on, I wasn't able to be there this year, but it is amazing that you guys do what you do out there, and then raising money, and then literally, in this particular case, looking for a way to give back to the community and our Public Safety Department. So, on behalf of myself, and I know the rest of the councilmen, that, thank you for this generous donation, it'll go to very good use for our K-9 program. So I know there's only a few people left in the audience, it's the rest from up here now, but let's give them a round of applause for this one, they did pick me.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for partnership we've had with the city, we've grown big the last few years, and getting along with, working with the Public Works Commission, getting the trail to stay where it stays, working with the police department now, it's been great, and I just want to say thank you, appreciate it.
Everyone flip right over here, we'll do a quick photo.
Jeremy, if you guys want to go out, maybe you guys can talk with Brant, meet the dog and stuff, so, thanks again, I really appreciate, yeah, we'll see you later.
All right, while they're making their way out, I do need, just to make it official, from a council's perspective, I need a motion in a second to accept the donation. We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to the group out there. Next item is the Craig Woolery Scholarship Fund Check presentation, and again, once again, we'll start with our Public Safety Director, Pete Kerner, will get us going here, and then of course, our board is here, and our council member next to me here, and I know, and the Lions are here, obviously too, I know I'm keep talking here, and then I know Craig is not able to be here tonight, but Katie is here, so that's even better.
More importantly.
That's even better. but Katie is here. So that's, that's even better. That's even better.
All right. All right. Um, I always like to take this opportunity also just to kind of explain a little bit what our Public Safety Board is, who they are and some of the outstanding things they do for our department. I mean, this goes way back to when their crime prevention board and they've had a lot of change. Um, they, they grew into the Public Safety Works. We are a public safety model with police, fire and EMS. So they, um, they, they work with all of us. So, um, but it's a, a board that's made up of citizen volunteers from various backgrounds. We also have a liaison, uh, Ryan Pierre from the police department and John Pritchard, um, from the fire department. They meet once a month and they work together, promote the partnership between the citizens of Cottage Grove and the Public Safety Department in support of a safe community. Uh, kind of have their mission right there in front of you. Um, a lot of these things that we've done, we, we couldn't do without the board. So we really greatly appreciate them. A lot of this equipment, they're the, the ones that founded our, our K-9 program way back when Carla Bigum just kept pushing, pushing. We finally got it and got some great funds from the Pub, Public Safety Board there. So, um, they're really involved in community engagement, education. Um, they're in all the parades. They're the ones that really help fund the night to unite. They actually go to a lot of the parties as well. Um, they contribute to our safety camp. They're at our police and, uh, fire open houses, community showcase. If there's a public safety event, they're going to be there somewhere, helping and being involved. Um, where do they get their money? It's through generous donations. Um, we do get some grant opportunities. Um, like our explorers, they go down to Hy-Vee and they do the grocery bagging. So there are a lot of different ways. They've had, they've gotten created over the years. They do different fundraising. I know this year they plan on, I don't want to take your thunder, Julie, but they're going to do like a, a spaghetti feed. We did one years ago for the reserves and it was very successful. Um, they do the Monco events. They started selling different things. They have the plushies. Um, and they've also, um, helped us with all the different awareness patches that we do. Some are for sale and also our officers wear them. We started the military patch last year that they can wear, um, the veterans can wear them in, in support of military families too. And of course, they're big with their challenge coins as well. Um, some things that they gave us, um, obviously Central Fire Station that came in, we were able to get some equipment. Um, they were able to fundraise and, um, it's a great gym, our fitness center now because of them. Probably the most popular thing, I, they've given us a lot of good things, but those portable speed signs, we get requests and you'll see them out on the, they also, they did the speed trailer originally, um, you know, moving around, but now we have the portable signs that we can put up and, uh, we get calls on those. Everyone wants one in their neighborhoods. So, um, huge supporter of our K-9 program. They're the ones that purchased the dogs' equipment. Last year, they sent, um, Officer Sorgard down to, um, was it Texas? Where did he go? Louisiana, Louisiana. So, um, and they helped fund that. They, um, gave money towards the firefighter particle hoods. And finally, um, they're the ones that have been administering the Craig Woolery Scholarship. With that, I just kind of want to go over the, um, the scholarship, uh, but it's, um, to residents of Cottage Grove pursuing post-secondary education in law enforcement, emergency medical services, EMS or firefighting. The Cottage Grove Public Safety Board welcomes and supports diversity in the application and award product, uh, process. I believe one of your people that you sent through a couple of years ago just became a police officer. Is he, or almost? He's getting there? I can't remember his name.
Colin, yes.
Yep.
He was, uh, just last year.
Okay. With that, um, if you want more information on the application process, that is, our webpage has the, the form on it. Um, it's really, if you just go to Cottage and then search Public Safety Board, this all pops up. Um, the deadline is quickly approaching. It's on May 1st. And kind of one of the, when I was talking to Councilmember Olson about this, um, obviously he's the one that got this rolling in 2019 with a $500 donation. And now we're up to, they've raised, or there's been over $12,000 donated in the last five years. So, um, with that, um, I'd like to, you know, give Councilmember Olson a chance to kind of say a few words. And then we also have the Lions Club has also partnered with this as well. So.
Thanks. If I could, I'd invite the Public Safety Board, the Lions, and of course Katie to come up to the front.
Katie wanted to say that some words.
Yeah. This is, uh, this is one of my favorite times of year. Um, you know, we started, Kim and I, my wife, Kim and I started this scholarship in honor of, um, our friend and colleague, uh, Craig Woolery when he retired from being the Public Safety Director here in the city of Cottage Grove. That's one way to, um, preserve the tremendous legacy of Craig's service to this community. Uh, he, he did so many great things, whether it was as a police officer, dare officer. Uh, he was one of our bike cops, which I think all the ladies in town really liked. Um, he, he, uh, you know, he progressed through the ranks of our Cottage Grove Police Department and ultimately became our Public Safety Director. Uh, not only that, Craig also served for a short time as our temporary city administrator. Um, and what that tells me and what it should tell you is that Craig's legacy is service. He was always willing and, uh, very passionate about serving the residents of this community, serving the members of, uh, the city council and, uh, serving his family and, and his colleagues. And he would do whatever it took. In fact, when, um, he became the Public Safety Director, he went through firefighter training, even though, you know, his, uh, chosen profession was police officer and paramedic. Uh, but he went through firefighter training so he could demonstrate to those that he supervised who are in the fire service, that he was willing to put on the same uniform and do the same work that they were doing. And it also gave him a much broader understanding of the day-to-day that they did. And that really speaks to who Craig is as an individual and as a leader. So, uh, Kim and I were honored to start this scholarship and were grateful, very grateful to the Public Safety Board for, uh, every year taking in the applications from local people, uh, young people who want to go into post-secondary education for, uh, public service in the public safety realm. This year, we are, uh, very excited to donate $1,500, uh, on our behalf to the Public Safety Board for the Craig Woolery Scholarship. But in addition to that, uh, we've been able to develop a really great partnership with our Cottage Grove Lions Club. Kim and I are both Lions members. Um, it, it's something that, uh, we value tremendously and we are so grateful to our Lions, friends and family for, um, their generous donation this year as well. And I'm going to turn the mic over to one of our board members, Eric Witt, to explain briefly, uh, what the donation from the Lions Club is this year and, um, how the Lions Club feels about public safety here in the city of Cottage Grove.
Thank you, Justin. Just to follow up on Justin's words about service, uh, Lions International, our motto is we serve. So it couldn't be a better partnership. We appreciate this partnership so much. The Lions really enjoy the, the relationship we have with the Cottage Grove Public Service, with the fire EMS. Um, the support they grant us in all of our events, we could not put these events on without this. So we're honored and privileged to be here to present the donation tonight. And we're looking forward to the young people that are coming up in this department.
So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our Public Safety Board President, Julie Rice. And again, I want to thank the Lions for donating $2,000 in addition to the $1,500 that Kim and I were able to donate this year, uh, to the Craig Woolery Scholarship.
Thank you, Justin. Chief Coroner, Mayor Bailey, Lions Club, Public Safety Board, retired Mrs., uh, Woolery. It's been an honor. Thank you for entrusting our, uh, our board to take in the scholarship applicants and vet them and decide who's going to receive the scholarship for this year. And, um, oh my gosh, excuse me. It's been a long day. I snowbloat. I'm glad to see that there's a lot of people here. Um, also, um, with our scholarships, we, as Chief Coroner mentioned, we have, one of our previous recipients is working his way up into becoming a police officer for the city of Cottage Grove. Several of them go through CSO training. They become CSO officers. Some started out as police explorers, which our board also supports. So all of the fundraising efforts that we raise from the city, from other people, from organizations, we take that money and we try to support as best as we can. So where the Lions Club serves the community, our fundraising serves the public safety. So we want to thank you again for entrusting us and we will look forward to our applicants for this year. Thank you.
So I know Craig couldn't be here tonight. He has been at every one of these presentations previously, but, uh, he's on an out-of-town trip and we felt like, um, having Katie here was better anyway. So, uh, Katie, did you have anything you wanted to say? Come on up. Come on up. Yeah, come on up.
I do not have the gift of, uh, public speaking that Craig has, but, um,
You're Irish. It'll work.
Uh, no. But I do want to thank Justin and his lovely wife, Kim, for starting this scholarship. And also Mayor Bailey, Director Kerner, the Cottage Grove Lions, the council, the, uh, Public Safety Board. I can't thank you enough for what you've done to support this scholarship. I know Craig is very humbled by it. Um, so thank you all for everything you do.
You're welcome. Back to the mayor.
All right.
All right. So we'll make it official now.
Yep. You guys ready? Picture time. Come on in, everybody. Did you get it? Yep.
Stand up, Kim.
Not upside down as a film. So thank you guys again. We really appreciate it and, uh, you know, look forward to hearing who the recipients are later this year. It'll be great.
Fantastic. We do, uh, thank you all. Thank you, the Lions as normal. Yeah, thank you for coming and the Public Safety Board.
Well done. Yeah, thank you. Well done.
No, no.
Thank you. Good to see you.
All right. These are, obviously these kind of events are, uh, amazing. And, uh, what we do need to do to make it official, well, first of all, before we make it official, I do want to, you know, we were talking about the Cottage Grove Lions Club, obviously, which is tremendous. They do a great job, uh, in our community, whether it's this project or many, many others. Uh, we actually talking a little bit about Fourth of July fireworks here, not too long from now. Um, but also, uh, Justin and Kim Olson, uh, who got this program up and running, uh, to obviously, uh, give back to our community in such a great way. Um, and honoring, obviously, it's weird because we talk about honoring, but it isn't like we're honoring somebody that's passed. He's still here. Um, and very humble as was brought up earlier. But, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Olson and your wife, Kim, for generously getting this program up and running. Uh, and, uh, we'll see, hopefully in not too near future, uh, our first official, uh, person that's going to be, uh, coming through the whole program, uh, on those scholarships.
That'll be amazing.
Absolutely. So, um, do you, do I need to do them separate? Together? Okay. So I do need a motion and a second to accept the donations, both from the, uh, Justin and Kim Olson and the Cottage Grove Lions, uh, in amount of 3,500, uh, total towards the Public's Cottage Grove Public Safety Board.
I'll move that we accept both. We, we have to do it separately. Okay.
We, no, we don't.
No. Okay. I, I would move that we accept both donations.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clausen. Uh, any further discussion? Again, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, next on our agenda this evening is consent. Uh, is there anything council would like to pull on consent?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Item F, please.
Item F for you. Okay. Is there anything else council has? All right. Not seeing anything else then. I will turn it over to Councilmember Olson. Item F is, uh, an appointment to the, uh, Convention and Visitors Bureau.
That's correct. Pardon my voice. Um, I'm just getting over the grunge, which I know lots of other people are as well. And this cough has just been nagging. So, um, I sound like I'm a, a bass when really I'm a baritone. But, uh, this item is to, uh, recommend approval for Cottage Grove resident Michael Hotvet to serve on the Convention and Visitors Bureau for a term ending on December 31st, 2028. And we're lucky that, uh, Mike's here in the audience. Um, Mike is also, uh, a vice president of our Cottage Grove Lions Club. He's a member of our police reserves. Um, he, he also, uh, is a business owner operator and, uh, somebody that definitely is passionate about giving back to the community and concerned for the, uh, public welfare here in Cottage Grove. Uh, I believe Mike would be a tremendous addition to the CVB as, uh, he's always got his thinking cap on and he's very entrepreneurial in spirit. And I look forward to having him serve if approved here by the city council on tonight's consent agenda. And I just want to thank Mike for applying for this position and, uh, also thank you for your willingness to serve.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. So seeing no other items being pulled on consent, I will look for a motion to approve and, and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if anybody was here for the, um, all these items, we had quite a few items on our consent this evening. Um, all of those items have been approved. Uh, number eight, uh, in the eight A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clausen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, nine is public hearings are, are none this evening. Ten is bid awards are none this evening. Eleven is the regular agenda. We do have one item this evening, which is the sale of, uh, a 10 million general obligation bond series 2025A. And our finance director, uh, Brenda Melonowski is going to take us through this one. So welcome, Brenda.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, you will be awarding the sale of the 2025A general obligation bonds, uh, for the city of Cottage Grove. Uh, as a reminder, uh, those this year will be used to pay for pavement management, uh, equipment, uh, the water tower construction, and then the River Oaks irrigation project. Uh, two weeks ago, uh, city administrator Levitt, uh, myself and Stacy Kelvin with Ellers, uh, were in a bond rating call with S&amp;P, uh, regarding these bonds. Uh, we were awarded a AAA bond rating, uh, for these bonds. Um, at the same time, they also affirmed, uh, AAA bond rating for other debt here in the city. So very good news there. Uh, bids were open at 10 a.m. this morning, uh, for this bond sale. Uh, there were 10 bidders, which very robust environment. Um, some of the reasons is we were, uh, early to market this year. There's not a lot of other debt being issued. We work with our financial management plan on our debt issue. Uh, so we know, uh, at the beginning of the year, what we're going to be issuing in debts. We're able to go to the market earlier. Uh, rates are just down for municipal debt in general, uh, due to other market conditions. Um, and then our credit quality, our AAA bond rating. So that was some of the reasons, uh, that we had as many bidders as we did. Um, and because of that, uh, we had very favorable results. Uh, our low bid was 3.097%. Uh, our pre-sale report was 3.9%, so quite a bit lower. Uh, the high bid today was 3.2673%. So those, uh, 10 bidders were right, you know, together. Uh, the winning bid was the Baker Group, uh, in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Uh, because of that, uh, favorable bid that we received today, we are, we have over a million dollars in premium on that bond. And so what that means is that we will be utilizing that for pavement management and equipment. So things that we identified in the financial management plan that we would be issuing debt for in the future, we'll be utilizing that for. So with that, um, I'm happy to take any questions or the resolution is on the screen.
That's fantastic. Uh, fantastic results. And, you know, kudos to the staff once again. And I got to say, our council here for, you know, managing the, the finances, which kept our, uh, a solid AAA. And obviously, uh, they know we're good, good in our, in paying our bills and such, because to have that many bidders, uh, and maybe that low compared to what you thought the market was going to do is quite amazing. So, uh, council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Olson?
First of all, thank you so much for such great news. Oh my goodness. Um, having done this for a few years, uh, you know, you kind of get used to, um, what it looks like when you have to go to market with, with your bonds. And, uh, when you look at 10 bidders and 3.09% and most importantly, that million dollar premium, um, that really says that the market likes our paper a lot. And full credit to, uh, you, Brenda, your team and the staff as a whole, as it relates to managing our budgets year after year after year so well. Uh, I know you get, uh, awarded regularly for, um, you know, the way that, uh, the city of Cottage Grove manages its finances. But, you know, this is really the proof in the pudding. And, uh, I just wondered if you might take a moment and speak to, um, the residents who might be watching this either tonight or in the future about, you know, really what it means to be a AAA rated bond.
So what does that really mean, and how does it impact the taxpayer?
It impacts the taxpayer because we can issue debt, we get lower rates, so that principal and interest payment, just like when we own a home, if those excellent borrowers, right, get the lower interest rates, and so because of that, then the property tax levies that we need to do or place for our city are lower because of those lower principal and interest payments, and so that goes back to our taxpayers.
Perfect. So it saves money in their property taxes.
Correct.
It also provides us, I think, with a little more wiggle room as it relates to borrowing power and those kinds of things. Also, when you talk about, you know, AAA bond rating and how do you get there, what would you suggest are some of the key reasons, or maybe, you know, a couple of key reasons why we, first of all, achieved it, but most importantly, have been able to hold on to it now for quite some time?
They look at different things. So they, you know, one of the things that they look at is the tax capacity of our city. So when we had, you know, not only population, but with your population and your commercial area, your tax capacity grows. And so we're, you know, we're at that point. But importantly, for the city of Cottage Grove and city council, you took the time two years ago to do a 10-year financial management plan and to look at, you know, what are the impacts to our community, and how do we navigate property tax increases that aren't going to have big swings in the market to our community? And so that financial management plan did that. When we go out and we do our rating call with S&amp;P, we show them that, based on the needs of our community for those pavement management projects, or the equipment, or the other things that we need to do to issue debt because we are a growing city, that we've worked it into. Not only we can manage our operating budget, but our debt service also.
Fantastic. So I think what I heard you say is, you know, we work together with our friends at Elers to put together a 10-year financial management plan that was very well thought out and reasonable and rational, and the market likes that. And we've been able to stick to that plan by and large, and so, as a result, we continue to get favorable bond ratings, and I think that's a real credit to you and your team. So again, thank you so much. Great news tonight. This is unbelievable.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions at this point? All right, thanks again. So if somebody on the council would like to make the motion on the resolution that's before you, that would be fantastic.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-024, authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of 10 million dollars in general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, pledging for the security thereof, special assessments.
Sorry, should I restart? Yeah, why don't you be... I'm sorry. This will be official.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-024, authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of 10 million dollars in general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, pledging for the security thereof, special assessments, net revenues, tax abatements, and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Clausen. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Fantastic news. All right. Next on our agenda is council comments or requests, which is number 12, and I'll start with Councilmember Garza.
Let's see. I don't really have much to say today, other than I hope everyone was shoveled out and/or just played in the snow today. It was a beautiful day, do enjoy it, so. But other than that, our public safety did a great job. I know they, people, I seen a few people make comments that it was a little later that they got out there plowing, but I think it wasn't that they were a little later getting out there plowing, I just think that that snow was a bit heavier, and it caused them to be a little delayed on each place that they were actually plowing at. So they did an excellent job. We were able to get out there and move around our city streets, so I appreciate them. Thank you, guys, so much.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Thiede?
Yeah, I guess I don't have too much tonight either, just, you know, it was quite the interesting weather, and again, I started out this morning in Kansas City, and it was almost the same, they didn't get as much snow as we got up here, but so far this year, they've had more snow in Kansas City than we've had. But, so everybody can go out, it probably was a great day for making snowmen, right?
Or forts and...
Forts and everything else like that, right? And snowball fights. Or no, we don't fight. But, so just be safe and have fun in the snow.
Fantastic. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank the Cottage Grove Lions and the Public Safety Board for their participation this evening in the donation this year for the Craig Willery Scholarship. It's always fun to make the donation, but what's even more fun is when you, you know, get into May and you can identify who the scholarship winners are, and they'll certainly be backed here in front of the city council to award the scholarships at that time. So we'll just kind of keep watch on that. I have two things for this evening, one of which is just a recommendation or a suggestion. I've noticed that some of our commission meetings start with the Pledge of Allegiance and some don't in the city of Cottage Grove. And I just wondered if maybe we want to try to suggest being consistent with our commission meetings, and similar to what we do here at the council table, oh no, did you forget that? Oh my goodness. Okay, our Eagle Scout almost forgot something, but we're safe. No problem. So I just wanted to suggest that maybe we consider, you know, asking the chairs of each of the various commissions to begin their meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Certainly not something that, you know, I think we need to create any kind of statute around or anything, but just a thought. I think it's a great way to start our meetings, and some consistency may be nice. The second thing that I wanted to mention is, the month of March is not only Boys State Hockey Tournament Month and Basketball Tournament Month and all the rest of it, but it's also National Women's History Month. And it's a really important time for us to recognize the fact that, you know, throughout our nation's history, we've had some absolutely amazing women who have made massive contributions to the improvement of people's lives, and the month of March is a great time to just reflect upon that and remember that not only do we have a lot of great history to look back on with regard to the women who have contributed so many things here in our country, but we also have a very bright future to look forward to. And I specifically wanted to mention one individual this evening to give it a little local flavor. So, of course, many of you know that Carla Bigum is our current county commissioner here in Washington County, but what you may not know is, you know, Carla's whole life has been dedicated to service. She started in 2005, along with Mayor Bailey, in fact, on the Cottage Grove City Council. And, you know, that's 20 years ago, and Carla's still a pretty young person, especially if you sit in the chair I sit in, because I'm definitely older than she is. But, you know, she got her start in public service very young, and has served both as a city council member and a county commissioner, but she's also served in our state legislature, both in the House and in the Senate. And I think it's important that we remember that there's a lot of Carla Bigums out there in communities all across the Twin Cities and the United States, and how lucky we are that we have people like Carla and Katie Seeburn and Jill Seacrest and so many others who have served the city of Cottage Grove honorably in elected seats and represented our citizens very effectively, no matter what role they've played in. So let's remember, throughout the course of this month of March, some of the wonderful women that we've had serving our community, South Washington County, I think a lot about Myra Peterson as an example, who was our longest-serving county commissioner here in Washington County, and other communities across the country, and thank them for their dedication to serving others. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. I have, I'll say four quick things, but important things. One is, this last Friday, started the seasonal fish fry and had the opportunity actually to have the fish fry down at River Oaks, which I know the VFW and places, other places have it too, but I just want to say the chef and that down there was amazing, did a great job with the fish fry, and they have other foods, if you don't like fish, that you can have there. They do recommend that you take reservations, so every Friday now through Easter, and you just go to riveroaksmunigolf.com or Open, I think it's Open Table.
Open Table.
Open Table is where you can make reservations, and you can plug how many people and what time you want to be there, but great service and definitely great food. The other item is, in about five days from now, on March 10th, the Cottage Grove Medallion Hunt, which we do this time every year, will run for five days or until somebody finds the medallion. The clues will actually be posted here at City Hall on the bulletin board in the lobby at 8:00 o'clock each day, and then at 9:00 o'clock, they will be posted on the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. So if you really want to get into this thing, you want to go up to City Hall, be here right at 8, get that clue and get out there and look. To win, you must be a Cottage Grove resident, and if you're under 18, you must have an adult with you, because there is, I believe it's a cash prize, am I correct? Counsel, yep, yep, shaking his head, yes, I believe so. And then lastly, from a parks perspective, the 2025 Easter egg hunt is back up at the Cottage Grove Ice Arena this year, because Easter is later this year. It's actually April 12th, and again, if you, you do need tickets, because there's so many, literally, it's great that we have so many kids that come out with families for this event. It's inside, so you don't have to worry about the weather. Just go to the city's website and you can register your kids or how many people that you want for whatever time that is currently available. And then lastly, and yes, it is going to be bizarre, I know Councilmember Thiede has been chomping at the bit with regards to Strawberry Fest, but I have started my annual checking out with different businesses for the 4th of July fireworks this year, and I am very pleased to report, well, so far, everybody I've spoken with has, either has committed or are in the process of committing, including maybe some additional dollars, which means that amount would go up. So what I try to do is get $5,000 from area businesses to put towards, so we have a $25,000 show. And so far, we do have firm commitments from North Point once again. We've also got a firm commitment from Tennis Sanitation. Willie is like, just tell me where I send the check, which is pretty cool. And 3M has also stepped in with, already yesterday, and mentioned, yep, we're in for it for the $5,000. Then we do have a few others, I'm not going to say them yet, because there's a few other businesses that we've had in the past that have committed to being part of it, and some of them are actually looking to up that amount. So we may actually have more than $25,000 for a fireworks display this year. So I just want to thank them. That obviously helps us make the fireworks. The city doesn't pay for the fireworks. The Cottage Grove Lions actually kind of get the program running, they have a Family Day and such, and I think, I don't know if it's been official yet, but I'm hearing that we may be shifting it two days.
It is official.
Okay. So just, this last year, just, I'm going to throw this out there then, if you're okay with that.
I do.
So last year, if you all know, the 4th of July was very stormy, and so basically, everybody had to cancel their fireworks or postpone them. And in our particular case, the Lions then moved it to Sunday.
That's correct.
After the 4th of July. And the crowds were huge, much more than normal. And I think part of it has to do with Cottage Grove just loves to go out and go to cabins, go up north and whatever, and then they all want to come back. And so I believe, if I'm hearing this right, the 4th of July fireworks in Cottage Grove will actually be the Sunday after the 4th.
After the 4th.
So they're going to do the same thing as they did last year, so that people can be in town, they're back, if they're heading back into work. I know that works best for me, because since it's on Sunday, I'm going to actually be able to see the fireworks and enjoy the festivities. So we'll get more of that out to the public, but I did want to let the public know that even though it's the 4th of July, and a lot of people are out at cabins and such, I just want to mention that that will be a change, that, again, we'll try this year to see how that goes. Councilmember Thiede, something?
Yeah, you did jog my memory of, besides having the Strawberry Fest fireworks that we're going to have again this year, not quite as big as the city one, but we are also going to have a drone show.
Yes.
Oh, cool.
With like 100 drones and so forth, so I think that's on Fri...
I believe it's at Friday night.
Dave's Dancing Drones or something like that?
Nah.
Okay.
Nah. Well, and that should be interesting this year, so.
Yeah, and it's just, it's amazing, because once again, obviously, the Strawberry Fest committee does all their fundraising, and businesses are supporting them. You never know with the economy sometimes, wondering how things are going right now, if all these businesses are going to say, oh, this is not the year I can fund, you know, or help, but everybody that I've spoken with so far has stepped up, and it sounds like same thing for Strawberry Fest. And frankly, if you would have seen in our consent agenda this evening, the number of grants that our amazing staff has been going after to fund things within the community is just tremendous. So more to come on that as we get those things up and rolling. But I just wanted to publicly at this moment thank North Point Development Team, the Tennis Sanitation, and 3M for their generous support of the 4th of July fireworks. Okay? All right. No other council comments or requests, so just for the public to be aware, we do have a workshop, which is open to the public. We are going to be going into our conference room to talk about Polco Community Survey. It's a survey, a process that we're looking at doing here in the very near future, and we do not have any workshops that are closed to the public, so we won't be adjourning in here, we will be adjourning in the conference room. So everybody have a great evening.